Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education's order at 7:07 PM and start this meeting as we do all of our meetings with a pledge allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, well, Happy New Year, I guess, first off. Our first item on the agenda is report from student representatives. So Jenna, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, so on December 20th, the AP Literature English students had their presidential debate and the senior speeches are also coming up relating to those English classes. And the seniors additionally presented their capstone projects on December 18th. And more recently, on January 4th, the Attorney General George Jefferson met with the political club and injured law students. And the winter band concert is tomorrow in the auditorium. And midterm start next Tuesday on the 22nd. And for the winter sports, the spotlight game of the week, the boys' basketball is against Middletown, January 18th, and the girls' basketball is against New Britain on January 24th.
Yeah, excellent. That was a lot. We're starting off the year with a bang. Thank you. And now moving on to committee of thought, Student Achievement Committee. Are you fielding that?
I guess so.
Okay.
We met earlier this evening with Erin and Eileen. And we went through, well, the last time we met, we went through the Program of Studies, which I think we're voting on later. This time, we talked about the high school graduation requirements and the impact of the new state law, so to speak, on the graduation requirements, the credit distribution, the idea of STEM and humanities. There's an awful lot of it there. And Erin has done a tremendous amount of work, kind of retooling the policies that will have to go into play that we'll be voting on next time.
Next time, not...
Right, the Program of Studies is up for a vote later. And there is some connection, some overlap between the two, but the graduation requirements has some different entities to it as well.
Okay, thank you. Now to hear from, was there any additional comments on that? Now to hear from the Communications Committee, Julia, are you president?
Yep, so last week or two weeks ago, week and a half ago, the Communications Committee met with Brian and Matt, so it was Jake, Tracy, Matt, Brian and I. And we just discussed some ways of informing community. We collectively put together some slides. I shared them out briefly to you guys at the retreat. And Matt requested that I share them up again tonight in the public setting. And then if you guys have any questions, comments, just to bring them up beforehand. But a few things that we are working on as a committee, really trying to reach out to the community and find ways to inform people of what's going on. One thing that we discussed that we won't be going over tonight is Brian's gonna start working on including a Google link into his weekly update so we can almost like sign up for school-based events so we can have more of a presence in the schools and at events. In the past, the past few years, we talked about doing Board of Ed School Representatives. We've discussed that. There's some pros and cons to that. And maybe doing it this way so we can all be out in different schools and making ourselves available to the community. That's one thing. The two other things is our education column, The Citizen, which hopefully will be in this week's Citizen as the first column. And then the third is social media, which we really want to get your feedback on because we, you know, need to have open communication about this and see where the board wants us to go. So, just to go through these slides. So The Citizen, we're gonna have a weekly education column. We're gonna hope for a weekly basis. We have put in The Citizen that's going to be out on a regular basis rather than a weekly, just so we either might not have the content on a weekly basis, it might not get published on a weekly basis. But this is for an opportunity to really share factual information about what's happening in the schools. And it's great because we can share all the things that's going on and that's happening. So we're not just saying, "We need you to vote." But then, when it comes time to a vote, people will know all the things we've been doing. So then, you know, they'll understand what we're doing, you know, with our resources. Some of the topics could be faces of Berlin schools, a principal's column, budget information, highlighting the SAT test scores, understanding the choice program, cuts and grants and how it impacts the district, tech ed and the changes in middle school, like the evolution from tech ed to, in fact, STEAM. Tracy had a great suggestion, like we could start and each week with a trivia question, start each week with the next question. There's room to play with this and really evolve and make it our own. And it doesn't need to be just limited to the Board of Ed writing it. We could, you know, have, you know, all stakeholders participate in this. But I think that's the vision of it. It's gonna take a lot of work before it's really off the ground and running. We've already been utilizing press releases. So we have press releases. That's something that, you know, the Board of Ed's already doing, the district, you know, Brian's office. And then really, in addition to those, keeping those, but keeping that column. You know, Matt was very clear that this is strictly a factual way to share information on a weekly basis. We want to train people's eyes to look for this column. If it's not there, then it will be there, you know. But just like as we start out, really train people's eyes and then we can scale back if need be. Again, this is something new. We don't know how it's gonna work. We don't know if it's gonna go off successfully right off the bat or we're gonna have to keep revisiting it and saying like, "This is working, this isn't", and keep tweaking the process. So we've talked a little bit about bringing social media into our realm of the world. So there's Facebook groups, Facebook pages and Twitter. So, you know, the Berlin Buzz is a closed group. If you look right there, Kim Montana Grace is, you know, the person who is posting. If we made a closed group and we posted, it would come from our personal Facebook page. It wouldn't come from like Berlin Board of Ed Facebook page. You can't make events the way you can in a Facebook page. In a closed group, you can turn off commenting. In a page, you can't. So a Facebook group, commenting can be turned off. You can't create events. Posts cannot be shared if it's a closed group. So that would, you know, come down to what the board wanted and the vision they wanted to go with, direction they wanted to go with. So if you look at that, that's a sample of a public group. It says Berlin CT Board of Education. And, you know, it just says, "This page is managed by the members of the Berlin Board of Education." It was a first post. And you see my name as the one posting it. So I know some board members have issues with that. They don't necessarily want their names out there. I think one that might be beneficial is if you're trying to run for reelection and get your name out there. But other than that, sometimes people don't want all their personal info out there. So this is Berlin High's Facebook page. You can create events. I think that could be really important for us as a board to create certain events like Board of Ed meetings or, you know, town referendum or budget meeting or other types of events because we often hear from the community, like, "We don't know what's going on" or "We don't know when the vote is" or "We don't know what the purpose of this is." So it's like, "Come out, get involved." A lot of people get their information from Facebook. And then if you look at that under posts in the center, it says Berlin High. So if Jamie wanted to post something, it wouldn't be from Jamie's page. It would be from Berlin Board of Ed page. So, you know, it shows, so one good thing is it shows your stats of engagement. So we, the administrators would get weekly emails showing people are engaged, people aren't engaged, engagements up, engagements down. You can create the events. All posts come from the page, not your personal account. You can link it to Twitter. Posts can be shared. Commenting cannot be turned off. Comments need to be monitored and deleted if need be. So this is an example of a post I made on the page I created. That's not live yet. So I asked Jamie to write a comment. This should be interesting. You could read that as condescending or whatever. And I say, "Okay, I'm gonna hide or delete the comment." I hid the comment. Jamie then looked at hers. I said, "Jamie, I hid your comment." She didn't see that I hid her comment. From that point, I can decide, okay, we're gonna block Jamie or keep it hidden or we can unhide it. But there are some options. What I do like, if above the comments, you see how many people it reached and how many people were engaged with it. So, you know, there might be some correlation at some point to voter turnout with this. We might be able to measure that. If voter turnout is, you know, 2% higher, you know, this year versus the past five years, then we could say, "Well, maybe social media is having a positive impact." I did speak with three consultants, Brett Mendoza from Hollywood, California. He manages a lot of nonprofits, some educational but not public schools. And then primarily in the music industry on Sunset Strip. And he thinks that we should utilize social media to engage our community. We have a limited audience, so we can achieve a lot with that. We can create a page and the group within the page turn off commenting. That's a little more complicated. Create posting guidelines and rules to make sure language is appropriate, comments are appropriate, et cetera. He thinks engagement is engagement. So if people do get negative, then, you know, negative engagement is still engagement. That was kind of his take on it. He thinks letting people vent as long as they don't get out of line and follow the guidelines and rules is still okay. That's kind of the way he goes with it. He thinks the weekly stats regarding views and engagement is a really powerful tool. And like I just said, we could measure voter turnout, see if there is some type of correlation. Then I spoke with Evelyn Rosetti Ryan from ACES. She's a chief marketing and outreach person. She said, "Social media must be creative, strategic and purposeful." She suggested, "Why reinvent the wheel? Utilize the district pages that already exist and already have the following." School districts that already have the audience. Schools and district, the districts already have the audience we want. So rather than putting our own, we send the information to those pages. We want to represent a united front, the district and the Board of Ed. By creating our own, she thinks it could be very confusing and we won't be representing that united front. Snow days, weather cancellations, vacations, holidays, stuff like that. People might come to our Board of Ed page to look for that, not say Berlin High School's page. And we just need to be very strategic about it. And if we go for it, we need to make sure we are being very aligned with the district. Teddy Slate is a marketing and communications director for Eastcon and she's a part of the Rask Alliance. She does not recommend we create our own page. She thinks we would have to do a lot of policing for volunteer position. She thinks it creates an opportunity for the trolls to emerge. We know in Berlin, they do exist. However, looking at the school pages, I do not find a lot of too many. But that could be because they're school pages or it could be because they're managed really well and these comments are taken down. It's hard to constantly create engaging content. And you have to post regularly to make sure you're boosting engagement. She suggested, rather than creating our own page, how could we utilize pages that already exist? So I shared this slide with you guys on Saturday. Erin did, Erin McGark did let me know that Enfield's Board of Edu, Ellington's Board of Education does have their own. I did go through it. They basically just post the minutes from their board meetings. So I didn't get to look too far out into other boards. You know, last week I did. I did not find many. I did find personal pages, like, you know, if it was Matt Tenzel, the Berlin Board of Education chairperson, or people's pages, but not individual Board of Ed pages. So Ellington is doing it. But on a plus side, you know, I know Matt said that we do need to come up with some topic to present next year at the PCE conference. So if we do go with this initiative, then we could present about our trials and tribulations with this. These are the existing pages and the amount of likes. So going back to Teddy Slate and Evelyn Rosetti Ryan, utilizing these pages, they already have the member base. So, you know, just so you see how many likes our members each page has. So what is the best way to inform our community while utilizing social media? So this is where I want to open up now, now that the Board of Ed has heard this two times. So do you think we should create our own pager group? We're not gonna vote on anything tonight. But as a communication committee, we need to hear from the rest of the board. Do you think we need to create our own pager group? Do you think we need to utilize district pages and make a presence? Or other suggestions or ideas? Because at this point, as a committee, like, we need our Board of Eds.
Input. So I think because on tonight's agenda, it's just listed as a report, we have to just leave it as a report?
Yes, that is totally fine. I was just going by what Matt had suggested. Had suggested. And I know he's not here, so...
Okay, so perhaps we can return to it and put it on the agenda at another point in time. People can kind of chew on this a little bit and come ready to offer feedback.
Absolutely. We think that, like, we, as a committee, don't think this is something we need to jump on right away and put into place right away. We think that with the education column as well as, you know, in the weekly update, with events that we can like kind of sign up for to make a presence at, you know, we're already getting the wheels rolling to get involved and get out and engage our community. So, you know, start thinking about this and just, we really want the board to discuss this at a later time.
That was a lot of good information that you called from multiple sources. So thank you for presenting and thank you to the Communications Committee for even contemplating the possibilities. Thanks. The next item on the agenda is correspondence to the board.
Yes, I have three correspondents to the board here. First is from Lindsay Marshall. "Thank you so much for the beautiful gift during this difficult time. Your kindness is greatly appreciated." Next, Nicole Arsenal, Griswold teacher also. "Thank you so much for the beautiful plant you sent to me. Your kindness and concern for me at this difficult time meant so much. Much appreciation, Nicole Arsenal." And lastly, David and Jen Basso, both teachers at Berlin High School. "In our time of loss and having given us comfort and healing through your kind words and gestures, thank you for the beautiful plant basket." David, Jen Basso.
Additional correspondence to the board?
Just an update on the Policy Committee, the ADHOC Committee that we put together in our December meeting. In addition to myself, Julia, Brian and Erin, I have gotten, I don't know if it's begrudging acceptance or just overall acceptance and euphoria from Eileen Eustace, Sal Urso, Al Souza and Linda Holian to participate to represent each of the school levels and people personnel services. We hope in the coming weeks to have some meetings and start to talk about policies and bring back more information as we proceed.
Excellent, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Audience of Citizens. Is there anyone who would like to share their thoughts with the Board of Education? Yes?
Good evening. I'm John Archibald, 239 Hawthorne Drive. I'm here both as a citizen of the town and as a member of the Board of Finance for the town. Thank you, Julia, for your information on the communications because there is some Berlin buzz that occurred today that I think the board should take a look at. I'm not sure that you mentioned how that would be monitored, in other words, seeing what's out there. But there is a topic that's out there that I think received 180 comments during the day today. And quite frankly, thinking back to my time on the board, the notion would be to get as many positive stories out about the districts and Berlin Robbins, that type of thing, to show the town what good things are going on in the world of Berlin education. I think one of the lessons that the Board of Finance learned was that during the time of the budget hearings, the Board of Finance is empowered by the charter to hold hearings and we did not. I think that's a mistake that we made on our part and we'll be looking to work with the board and other town elements to get as much information to the public as we can about what we're trying to accomplish, be that the 10-year capital plan, which it appears to be a beast with very short legs, almost centipede style, like small but many, but very fast. And I think that the notion of what the goal is for the educational component, me being the Board of Ed liaison to the Board of Finance, is trying to understand that the budget process is not a one-week or a one-month type of thing. The budget that you present should be an embodiment of those things that you feel are positive, goals that you hope to achieve. And that doesn't always get applause in the signposting and the other stuff that happens right after the budget is announced and even up to the budget hearings. I think that we found that the hearing that we held after the first referendum was interesting. But again, it gets back to what you spoke to very early, a moment ago, which is classic misinformation. There's a lot of information that gets passed around this town. It is all factual. And I'm not a proponent of our current president who likes to talk about fake news, but there is some. So I've traded cards with Adam Selena, the RC Chair, and hope to do the same thing that I did with Tim Oaks and Matt last year, which is work with you to best understand and give you questions or information that I hear and look forward to the budget process.
Thank you, John. Are there any other members of the audience who would like to offer comment? Okay, not seeing any others. I'll close the Audience of Citizens and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Personnel. We have two retirements, the first being Chris Wolf, teacher of technology education at Berlin High School, who has submitted his letter of intent to retire at the end of this school year. So I will take a motion.
Aye, aye. "A move to accept the retirement of Chris Wolf, teacher of technology education at Berlin High School, effective June 30th, 2019. Also to thank him for his 34 years of service he has provided to the youth of Berlin and wish him good health and happiness in his retirement years."
Thank you, Richard. Second?
Second.
A move by Rick, seconded by Julia, all in favor?
Aye.
And the second is Karen Schroder, math specialist at Emma Hart Willard School, who has submitted her letter of intent to retire at the end of the 2018-2019 school year.
"I have moved to accept the retirement of Karen Schroder, math specialist at Emma Hart Willard School, effective June 30th, 2019. Also to thank her for the 25 years of service she has provided to the youth of Berlin and to wish her good health and happiness in her retirement years."
Second?
Thank you. Motion by Tim, seconded by Adam, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. And thank you to both of them, obviously, for the contribution that they made and I'm sure we all wish them well. Fifth item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to remove or add anything at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as you present it.
Second? Moved by Adam, seconded by Julia, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Now into new business. I believe Assistant Superintendent McGurk and High School Principal Sis Eustace will be presenting for us.
It's fine. We can see it from the side, Erin.
You don't want to get crazy with her on the small table. By herself, she's really led that as the head of this.
So first, I wanted to start with just the lens at which I was taking a look with others in the building, the department heads, Kelly and Barb in terms of administration, also speaking with teachers in terms of looking at the current Program of Studies. Overall, the book is really, the Program of Studies itself is really in good shape. And one of, but one of the things that I was noticing as I was going through, there were a lot of classes that were in there that really haven't run for a number of years. There's some overlap. And as we start to look at the scheduling process and maximizing the way in which we want to use our FTE, we really needed to take a look at our course offerings. One of the other things that I wanted to try to push forward is this idea of pathways or strands. So the idea is in terms of honestly, that's interested in a particular area of study, say, for example, in art, that the Program of Studies will communicate clearly a pathway for me to follow if that was my area of interest. By all means, you can certainly still take a variety of different courses, but one of the things that we're always trying to push in terms of personalization, if I'm interested in a particular area, is to be able to go in-depth. So just, that was, those were just a few things that we were taking a look at. So just in terms of summarizing some of the changes, I had put together a summary sheet that was included in addition to a document that went a little bit more in-depth in terms of the changes and then a mock-up of the draft of the book as well. So some of the general changes are that we will be including the new graduation requirements. We're hoping that the word "draft" won't be across from them. We're hoping that we'll be able to improve them before the book actually goes to print. We will also provide the inclusion of the Berlin Learner outcomes as that is the direction in which we want to head with all of the decisions that we're making regarding our curriculum. We spent some time revising the environmental sequence charts. Some of the charts, even in some of the core areas, felt a little confusing. So we cleaned some of those charts up so that a student and a parent, as you were looking at the pathway, if I start in this particular class, what's a typical pathway that I might take in science or math? We worked a little bit on those to make them provide more clarity. And again, keep in mind that the charts are all labeled that this is a typical sequence. It doesn't mean that it's the only sequence because we clearly want students to develop individualized plans as much as possible. And then again, as I started to talk a little bit about the course Pathway Strands, we set some, we created some pathways specifically in the art department as well as technology education. So you'll find that when you're looking at the art department and you look at the opening chart, you'll see that there's three pathways. There's a drawing and painting strand, a 2D design strand, which has a heavy emphasis on digital art, as well as a 3D design strand. And then in technology education, we took the wide variety of courses that are offered there and broke those into communication technology, engineering and design technology and a manufacturing strand. So again, if I'm a student that's really interested in wanting to do something connected to manufacturing, I can look at the chart and see all of the courses that are included. So the hope would be to further expand that into the other elective areas next year with business, family consumer science, music and theater arts as well. And then just in terms of new courses, we have one brand-new course that we're offering and it is a CCP course. And in Mobile Computer Science Principles, we were offered an opportunity through Capital Community College. They approached us. They are part of a national grant in terms of promoting computer science, particularly with underrepresented populations. And as we have been talking about trying to expand some of our STEM opportunities, we were very excited that they approached us. They will provide the curriculum for us. They will train our teacher. And they will provide support for our teacher throughout next year as we implement this new course. So we're really, really excited about this. Right now, our two computer science offerings are advanced placement courses. And for some students, that might feel a little overambitious as a way to start in computer science. So this is really meant to be a great entryway course and that way, if they want to expand and continue, they can in the two AP courses. So again, it's, we really feel it's a great accessible course for students in 10th grade and higher and they will be able to earn college credit through Capital Community College. So we're actually really, really excited about that opportunity. And we're excited for the teacher that is going to be taking that on. So Mr. Foreman had agreed to go to the informational sessions and do the training. And so we're really excited and he's really excited about it as well. So one of the courses that I want to mention, it's not really a new course. It's a new, it's, we basically are reconstituting a course and that's the Health and Wellness One. And that is to align with the new graduation requirements in terms of their, the new graduation requirements from the state are requiring one credit in PE and one in health and safety. So in terms of developing a four-year strand for health and PE, we need to have something in place for the incoming ninth graders because the new graduation requirements will impact the incoming class of 2023. So we are working with the Health and PE Department. So we are working with the Health and PE department to develop the Health and Wellness course, and it's basically just a revamping of current curriculum as well as a reframing in terms of a wellness perspective on this. So the ideal wouldn't be to spend an entire semester in the health classroom, but to also spend time, whether it's in a yoga room, or the fitness workout room, or the gym, and have it really be a much more integrated approach for all four years in terms of health and physical education. So we're actually really excited about having an opportunity to work with that curriculum as well. Some of the expanded courses, we have theater, technical theater, television production, and engineering design and robotics. So right now, we offer all of those courses as a first basic, like introductory course. So we have some students that are underclassmen, they are not graduating, that are starting in those courses, and so we want to offer an expanded level of that course. So if I'm in Theater 1, or I'm in musical theater this year, and I want to stay in theater, now I can have, will have an opportunity to take Theater 2. So for, in engineering design and robotics, we currently have 28 students. I believe it's 17 of them will not be graduating this year, so we want to hold them in that engineering and design robotics, so we're offering a second level. In speaking with the teachers, they're aware that the plan would be to run those courses concurrently. So I would run Theater 1 and Theater 2 in the same period. It wouldn't require additional FTE. It would provide a variety of opportunities to advance the curriculum, expand the curriculum, and also provide opportunities for students in an advanced level to work in a facilitated role. So if you think about theater, they may take on opportunities to direct students that are in Theater 1. So there's a lot of really good opportunity. I'm also really excited about doing that with television production. We have students that are currently in television production, and we really want to expand the use of our TV studio. And in order to do that, we need to keep people in those classes, so we have an opportunity to expand into television production too as well. So again, on the summary sheet, I won't go through every class, but there's a, there's a list in terms of courses that just went through a name change for a variety of reasons. Some, it might be to try to attract more students to the course, or that the title will actually more appropriately reflect the content of the course. Another example with the AP Studio Art, that is a change that's being mandated by the college board for that course, that is AP 2D Art and Design, AP 3D Art and Design, and AP Drawing. The reason for that is now students, if I took an AP Drawing class in my junior year, I would then have an opportunity to take AP 2D Design in my senior year if I wanted to. So that way, it doesn't double up on the transcript. So again, a lot of those are just some name changes, or just, they were very slight revisions to some of those courses. On the backside, and I know this landed in the paper today, that there was a list of courses that we are pulling out of the program of studies. So one of the things that I want to provide some clarity on is simply because we're pulling it out of the program of studies for next year, doesn't mean that those courses just go away forever. If there's a demonstrated interest, or people are looking, or we look to meet, we want to re-expand into some of these areas, we're fortunate that we have those courses on the books. The lens in which we were looking at in terms of the selection of those courses is the fact that they haven't, many of them haven't run for three years, and/or if, if they haven't run, or we've continued to offer them, they're running at a very either low enrollment, or the number of requests that are coming in is maybe three or four kids here, five kids here, and it's never really enough for it to run the class. So in terms of pulling these out of the program of studies and not having, having them available in the portal, one of the things that you need to realize, by continuing to have all of these, you have a smattering of kids here and there, that's, that can add up to close to 100 requests that really could go elsewhere to classes that we're running. And again, those courses would then more appropriately reflect what we need for FTE in terms of running those courses. Some of the courses, also in discussion with the department heads or teachers within some of the elective departments, we discussed if there was a major overlap. So take, for example, survey and business. We also offer something, we offer survey and business in the program studies. We also have a business survey class. So the survey and business was really focused on Microsoft Office coursework, which students are learning in a variety of different classes. There really isn't a separate need for that class separately. Another course was the art survey class, which was basically like an introductory art class, and working with the art teachers, because students have been in an art curriculum since kindergarten, they actually were hoping to pull students directly into, let's get into drawing and painting, let's get in right into pottery, let's get right into sculpture, let's get it right into 2D design. And they can still learn some of the, you know, introductory skills that are needed in those classes, but they really will pull them right into a strand right away. So, and again, the majority of those classes have not run since 15, 16. So even though, keep in mind that we expanded a couple of, we expanded at least four courses, and although it appears that we're eliminating 22, I just want to also put out there that we're still offering over 110 elective courses. So it's really important, especially with the size of our school, it's important to try to find that, I call it the sweet spot in terms of providing breadth, opportunity for choice, a variety of different courses, but you don't want to splinter things so much that it's really impacting your FTE, because I feel like year in and year out, you're offering these courses, and yet, we're not running them. So it's, I think we'll have a better idea with pulling some of these courses out in terms of where some of those numbers are going to fall, so that we can continue to build on those strands that we want to build on. In terms of next steps, we want to continue with the course Pathway and Strand Development. Eventually, we're going to be putting a subcommittee together this coming semester to take a look at something called an honors challenge, or perhaps leveling up in courses that we don't currently offer an honors credit in, which may expand students into, expand their interest into taking various elective courses that are not currently offered in an honors level. And we want to continue to pursue additional college and career pathway courses. We recently had some discussion with Goodwin College, right? And they actually are interested in partnering with us as well, and we really want to be able to take advantage of some opportunities that, in terms of some of the community colleges and other colleges and universities that are reaching out to us, that would provide students an opportunity to earn college credit at the same time earning their high school credits. So I know that was a lot of information, so I don't know what questions we have at this point.
Thank you. Members of the board have questions or comments for Eileen and/or Aaron?
I have a question, just because I'm curious. With respect to the Mobile Computer Science Principals course in collaboration with Capital Community College, I know you had said that this would be an opportunity for students who might be, who might find the AP courses a bit daunting. Is there, was there any discussion about some additional courses, maybe to bridge at some point in the future if this were a success? Was that part of the discussion with Capital Community College or no?
We haven't further expanded the conversation with Capital, but we can certainly, if we're finding a need that beyond this, that there's, if we want another course, I feel like this is the opportunity to kind of dip our foot in the water a little bit. I, I really think, just in listening to a lot of the experts that are out there, and the opportunities that are going to be available for our current students when they graduate from high school and/or college, it's, if they can have some sort of background in computer science. And there's a difference between the, say, a programming versus principals, that we really want to, I would love to see that strand really fleshed out over the next few years. So I was, I, I felt like it just sort of fell in our lap at the time. I couldn't have asked for a better opportunity from Capital, so we're really excited that they reached out to us.
Sounds like a great opportunity, and sort of, just the initial foray into this collaboration. So perhaps it will evolve into something more.
And one of the other things is that with the new graduation requirements coming in, the state is doing it a little bit differently. They're talking about nine humanities credits and nine STEM credits, so this will be an opportunity for students, I think, as they're looking to earn their nine STEM credits, that computer science will have an opportunity to grow as well. And we actually have some teachers currently in the building that we reached out, we actually have several teachers that are really interested in getting trained and taking some additional coursework in order to teach computer science in our building.
That's great. The second question that I have is, I, in addressing the concern around a number of courses having been removed from the program of studies, and I did hear you say, and I just want to try and reiterate this, and perhaps you can answer the following question. I heard you say, you know, if there were an expressed interest about, what do I want to say? Kind of putting it back on the books?
If there's an enrollment.
Yes, if there were sufficient enrollment.
And it largely comes down to an enrollment issue, correct?
So how would you, just to sort of quell any concerns or anxieties that people have, how might that, what might that look like? In other words, how would students go about expressing an interest in this, such that it could leverage?
The, one of the best ways to express interest is for students to request a course when it is being offered. So for a number of years, as I said, the majority of these courses that are on the list haven't run in, since 15, 16, so that's going back three years. And the, and then oftentimes, when we say a course isn't running, that's when we hear from students. But by then, you committed FTE, and I, having been the master scheduler for the last 11 years in the schools that I've worked in, it's, it's very frustrating that, so one of the things we always put out to students is that if you didn't request a course the year before and you want it to run, you have to make sure that you put that request in. We look to build our schedule and schedule our FTE around your request and what you are saying you want to commit to. So in terms of courses that are taken off, we can certainly work with teachers to communicate with students, have conversations with students. The other thing too is what are some of the demonstrated interests that are coming in the courses that we're currently running, and are those the courses that we need to take a look at, bring you back? The reason that I mentioned being able to bring them back is because these are already approved courses, and we have curriculum, they don't have to go through a whole new course process. So it's easier to bring certain courses back than it is to continue to propose. And so that's one of the things that I always try to be really cautious of in terms of, a lot of times, people want to propose new courses, but everybody has to understand that every time you propose a new course, our kids are sitting at very full schedules right now, but anytime you put a new course on the table, they're coming out of another course. So they're, they're coming out of another area. And so I personally, you know, as the principal of the school, am very protective of all departments. I want every department in our building to thrive, and which means I also want them to have equal opportunity in order to have students go through their classes. And I think as you continue to further discuss the new graduation requirements, you'll see how that it's laid out and how everybody's going to have those opportunities. So I will also say with the new graduation requirements and the way in which they're falling out is that, you know, one of the things that we have to be a little careful of is if we're talking about like pulling back in some areas, we may need that coming back. So for example, fine arts, the state is going to be requiring a fine arts credit. So we have to be really careful about like cutting, because you're going to need that as a requirement, starting with the incoming ninth graders. So again, these were all things that were tying together in terms of program studies as well as the new graduation requirements. But I think it's important for teachers to continue to talk to students. We also have been working with an innovation design team in terms of continuing to take a look at what are our offerings, but what might be some other innovative types of offerings? Are there opportunities for cross-curricular opportunities where we may be able to blend classes? But again, we have to really take a hard look that you can't cut, you can't just keep adding, because what you do is you put more pressure on the schedule, it creates more singleton sections, it makes it harder for kids to get into classes, and then ultimately, many kids will end up with, well, I didn't really want to land in this class, and now I had to pick something that was just open this period. So again, it's, it's trying to find that balance of breadth, as well as creating pathways that are robust and in-depth for students that really want to get in-depth, and, and then really being able to offer what you, what you say that you're hoping to be able to offer in terms of what we're putting in the booklet.
Thank you. I think that's very helpful. I'm, I'm familiar with course proposals and programs of study and so forth in a different setting, so I, I can appreciate that, but I think it's helpful for people to hear that, to also understand that there are many moving parts, and that this was a very thoughtful decision having been made.
And I actually have to say, sort of size of Berlin High School with 900 students, I think there's such a wide array of offerings, so even though these are coming off the table, and again, these are the courses that students have not been showing a demonstrated interest in. The courses that are remaining are courses that students have been showing a demonstrated interest in, as well as some that we just don't want to pull off the table just yet, and then it becomes our responsibility to market classes, to sell them, to basically tell students what we have to offer, and we actually have some steps that we're taking this year. So one of the things that we've talked about is having two course information days, so that over the course of two days, in every single class that meets, periods one through eight, that everybody will be talking about course offerings in every department, so every kid knows what's being, what's available. And then we talked a little bit about too, in terms of the elective offerings, in addition to that, providing them an opportunity to showcase, because they don't necessarily have access to all the students as a core area would. So just giving everybody, it's important for them to have equal airtime and an equal opportunity to let everybody know what we're offering.
Sure. Excellent. Aaron had something to say, and I also saw Adam.
I just wanted to reiterate, I was doing a great job explaining the process, but I want to reiterate the idea that this is a normal part of the process of developing a program of studies, that if you want to have a vibrant program, and as Eileen talked about, adding new courses, it's very a routine practice in school districts to go through and periodically remove courses or suspend courses temporarily that are not drawing much enrollment. And as we move forward, the other option, in addition to just bringing courses back full-time into the program of studies, is that there are courses that we may look at offering on every other year basis. So when that happens in the program of studies, it's printed, and we say, we'll offer it in odd, school years, let's start with odd numbers, so that people can plan ahead and know when it will be offered, so they can make the plan to appropriate.
Thank you.
We actually have one course that we brought back. We weren't running Foods this year, and so we're bringing that back. We just renamed it to Culinary Arts 1 and 2. We had, we had such a huge interest in the baking and pastry arts that we discussed the fact that students may want to take another semester elective, so that's an example of a course that we are bringing back, that had been in, it didn't run, and now we're bringing, it wasn't in the program of studies last year, and now we're bringing it back.
Adam?
First of all, my daughter's in the baking class, thank you, because she's making a lot of great things. And I appreciate, Aaron, what you said as well, that you do think it's, the program studies has to evolve over time based on, on needs. Just in, you know, I encourage you, I, between Capital Community College and also Goodwin College, I mean, offering courses every other year, I mean, just being creative with the way you do it, trying to do, I hate to say moribund, but we say it every year, but I do applaud you for that. And, you know, comment, history of rock and roll is not history of popular music. Is rock and roll not popular music?
You have to ask Jenna, Alex there, in terms of, I think if you ask them about music, it may not be rock and roll. I think in the end, ultimately, the course has evolved, they studied more than just rock and roll, so the name is reflected, and that's true, it may actually attract more students, so.
It's just a question, trigonometry, you know.
Can you keep it just forever off the table?
What's that?
Trigonometry.
It hasn't run.
I was just wondering when the last.
So our data goes back to 1415 in terms of when they were scheduling through Power School. It hasn't run before, since before 1415. So there's other math courses offering, so again, it just, it doesn't run, so we pull it out, we pulled it out.
And the UConn discrete mathematics, I mean, I'm sure that was UConn credit?
It was. I have to be honest with you, that one's a little mind-boggling to me, because I have seen that run at a fairly robust level in other schools. So while it's suspended for next year, it's something that I want to talk about in terms of our overall math program and bringing that back, because again, that's an example of a course where a student may not want to take an AP math course, and the ECE discrete math may be much more accessible for students.
And if it's provided in college credit as well, then, and assuming that we accept it in other universities as well, you know, that's a nice launching pad.
Right. Right now, there's, I wouldn't say there's a clear pathway to discrete, to that discrete math class, and so we have to work on creating that, and then we can bring it back in.
If I knew what discrete math was, other than doing this, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one. We had our presentation last month. And I, again, I wanted to commend Eileen and Aaron for the work they've done on this, because the multifaceted approach that they've taken on this, it's not just, we're going to cut a few courses that don't run, it's that we're going to thin out some of the courses that haven't run in several years. We're going to market the courses that we have, combined with new graduation requirements. You put all that together, and you're going to have a You put all that together and you're going to have a stronger program of studies all around. And the willingness to adapt and to create and to merge courses together, like Adam was saying, I think that kind of creativity is going to help in the long run. So a very nice job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What does Jennifer think? She's got to take these next year.
Well, I haven't heard of any of the courses that were removed.
That's good.
That we're removing? Yeah, that makes me feel.
That's very affirming. Okay, so without any further questions or comments with our motion?
Move to approve new course offerings, revisions to the Burrow High School programs of studies for 2019, 2020 as presented.
Moved by Adam?
Second.
Seconded by Rich. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Our next is to turn to Mr. Cugno. Thank you very much, Eileen, for a report, our facilities related update.
Just a couple of short comments. This time of year, there's a lot of focus on facilities. I mean, there's a number of things going on at the, at the community level. You've got the capital plant that is being developed and continue to be working on by the town. You've got our grant programs that are being taken care of, some we've already applied for, some we're waiting to hear about, all facility issues. And then of course, thirdly, our own budget, which we have our own site and building items which we'll hear more about, and capital plan. So there's a lot of conversation relative to what we want our facilities to be and where we're going to get the support from to do that. For example, about, you know, I think it's two weeks ago now, I had a meeting with the town manager, the director of finance, our director of facilities, and also Craig Simansky, who's our IT manager, myself went up and sat with them for a long while to talk about not only the grants coming forward, what to do with those grants when we get them, how we can actually couple those things with money that the town still has in its fund that it's willing to spend on education facilities. So it was a very, very good meeting. And it said to me that there was a tremendous amount of support for putting funds together and coupling them together to do great things in our facilities. For example, you might know that just in the last, I think it was in the last two weeks, the council had just approved putting in the bollards in front of Burrow High School. And that is something that we wanted to have happen for a while, and they realized that they have the money and realizing that they can make it happen. It was supported immediately, which is why. You know, a couple of other things we're working on, we had a lot of conversation about putting phone systems in the elementary schools, which is something we've wanted for a while, and everybody's very, very much behind that, having it as a top priority, which you'll see. And of course, also cameras at places like McGee and things like that. But I think to the board, I would say that there seems to be a tremendous amount of support from the city side who actually handles our facilities, the town side, I should say, to do some good things in the school. So I'm excited about being in these meetings and hopefully as time goes on, we can come back with some good programs.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. The next item on our agenda, six C, is the policy review revision, this is policy five one four one, the wellness policy. At our December tenth meeting, this item was tabled to allow for Superintendent Benegi to obtain clarification of the meaning of various words. There were some questions or debate, I guess, about certain word meanings contained within the drafted policy. Are there any further questions or comments about the policy at this point? It was in the pack.
I think it's important to note that the wording that we were discussing at the last meeting, the same wording we've had in the policy previously, that wording didn't change. We've not had an issue with that wording over the past years, so.
It's my knowledge, this is a policy that's required as a means of meeting the state federal requirements in order to get funding as well.
Yes, we have to have a wellness committee, we have to have minutes of the wellness committee to be eligible for state federal funding. But the, well, the question really was about the minutes.
Brian, I need to respond to the two points.
Go ahead.
One question that came up was around the issue of physical punishment, or physical activity as punishment. I met with the wellness committee today and coaches, who are current coaches for the Burrow Public Schools, explained to me that in the coaches' meetings, that's specifically discussed and viewed as inappropriate, and they all felt comfortable that that was something that was already part of the way that it's discussed. The question about the groups in the, the second part in terms of the distribution of food, the question that really was raised here was around things like parents providing a snack at an event. It was pointed out that the language around the groups really has to do with selling things in competition with the school lunch program. So it would prohibit, for example, a PTO group from having a brownie sale during the lunch period and competing against food that's being offered by the program.
And also before and after the beginning of school, which is the same wording we had previously. So I don't, I don't see that as an issue.
I don't see either of the consequences, something that we should block the wording in the policy.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions?
We need a motion to move it.
What's that?
We need a motion.
Yeah, no, that's next. It's coming.
I move that the board adopt revised policy five one four one, wellness as presented.
Move by Julia. That's okay. People are trying to move me ahead, I see. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. And the next item is the superintendent's proposed budget presentation. So I see Brian getting ready.
We talked a lot about that background, she's got a nice plan. Before I begin the formal presentation, I want, I have a sheet that's in everyone's
binder, it's the first page on the left-hand side. And the board requested, you see all the proposals, and they're finally before budget, the actual proposed budget. And if you take a look at that document, you'll see that what is highlighted are those items that are in the proposed budget. Everything in white is not in the budget. And you'll see the totals by school, of what the requests were for each school.
Is the high school total everything, white, blue, gray?
Yes, the high school total is white and gray. And if you look at the backside and flip it over, you'll see that the total proposed increases, two million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. The proposed increases included, one hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-one dollars. And just a little quick math there, the additional increases of two million, fifteen thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars, which is four point six, which would be a four point six increase on top of the five point nine six percent proposed budget, would give us a ten point five six increase to the overall budget. So I just think it's important to note that first before moving forward, that within this budget, what you see in green is essentially any of the new staffing that would be proposed. The one piece that is outside of this, the conversation with the mayor today and the town manager, is the security positions, which are being proposed to be funded in account sixty-one, which would be on the town side, not on the board side. So you will not see those included here in this proposal. Any questions on that before I begin? So in creating the budget, the process started early months ago by meeting with each administrator and under the direction of the board of ed, we asked them to not just look at their budget from the standpoint as we had in the past, and really ask for what they really wanted. That is what you had in front of you on that one sheet. Those were the requests from a positional, positions from a positional point of view of what each administrator felt they really needed. The summary sheet in the proposed budget that you have, which is under the tab, operational What I'd like to do is to take you through the summary sheet, I think will give you a perspective of each line and what the drivers are for the budget. Starting off with the administrator's salary, each supporting document is color-coded behind the summary sheet. This is something that we started last year. I can say that Mr. Cugno, when he's on the board, really promoted this. Mr. Cugno had a chance to actually work with the document, and it is cumbersome because the way, as many of you have been on the board, the way our system projects the numbers is much different and much more difficult to read, but these numbers are actually lifted from that document. But the summary page that we have from obviously matches what you have in front of you. So the first one, administrator salaries, looking at a dollar difference, an increase of sixty-four thousand, that really has to do with contractual obligations, it's at two point four two percent. If you think about the administrator's percent increase plus step, that's very true to where it should be. The second, certified salaries, you'll see an increase of eight hundred ninety-one thousand, twenty-six seven dollars. I can tell you that four hundred, almost five hundred thousand is directly related to contractual obligations, new teacher contract, so five hundred thousand contractually are due to the teacher. So making up, that makes up roughly two point four five percent, two point five percent of the four point five increase. Other two percent, we've had grants, Title I grant, we've had grants shrink that teachers have been in, we've had to put them back into the operational budget. So those certified salaries then make up the difference there of that, as well as the one position being at the high school with the school counselor that we've added. The counting rates at the high school were above two hundred and thirty per counselor, and that is above really what you could be effective, and the need was to put a counselor in at the high school. So those are the drivers making up the four point five percent increase. The non-certified salaries at almost four hundred thousand. Again, there's contractual obligations, some of the contracts have not settled, but those that have settled, roughly a hundred and seventy thousand of that contractual obligations for non-certified salary. We also have the recess paraprofessionals, were not in the budget last year, we've had to put them back in for this year. The reason behind that is we had recess paraprofessionals that allow our staff, our elementary staff to meet and collaborate with PLC time as the high school and middle school teachers do. Well, we removed them last year in the budget, we were taking the mediation and it is bargaining group work of the paras, and those paras needed to be reinstated. That was roughly a hundred and forty thousand. So we're at one seventy plus a hundred and forty. We have added the IT person that we were short when David Vaughn retired, that's another sixty-five thousand dollars. The custodian when Bob Smith retired at the high school. We also looked at our building subs. We did not have building subs at all buildings. We now have two permanent building subs at each building. The rationale behind that is oftentimes teachers have either short-term leave, having a building sub when those are students in building guarantees continuity for the students. Yes, it's a little more expensive than having just a sub in the sub list, but it guarantees that those students have the same person in that classroom for a short period of time. And it also allows the administrators to have greater confidence of who's going to be there daily. So, and, you know, looking at the absentee rate, it's, it would be a rarity not to have at least two people out, so it's not as though they're not being filled. So if you look at non-certified, those, those are the drivers that make up that increase there. Employee benefits, two hundred thirty-one thousand dollar increase there, three point five five percent. Obviously each year the benefits increase. Contracted services, last year, the ESS program at the high school, we had many parents come and speak to us and advocate on that behalf. That was that last cut to the budget of three hundred thousand. We ended up not being able to fund that within the budget, so that really is the funding for ESS back in the budget, that's roughly two hundred eighty thousand. And the other eighty thousand are just increases to the contracted services that we currently pay. So that twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-four percent, six, nine percent increase is really due to the ESS program predominantly and then just normal increases. Utilities, just a normal increase based on consumption. Transportation, that's up based on contractual obligation as well as mandated transportation. You know, for the first time, we spoke with NBT, and NBT said if you have another transportation request that requires a van, we have no more vans for you at this time. So we are definitely increasing transportation costs because of specialized transportation that we're required to have for students. I can get into specifics, you know, with you about what some of those drivers are, but those requirements for homeless and for some special education students were mandated to transport. Tuition, as we said last year at the budget, we had no additional funds in the budget for tuition. We used to keep two hundred thousand dollars for outplacements within the district. This year currently, we have four hundred thousand dollars worth of outplacements that will not take the whole four hundred thousand dollars because of where they're coming in during the year, or not at the beginning of the year. But if we started for a full year, it would be four hundred thousand dollars for those outplacements, and we're asking for an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars as money that will be set aside for next year, should we have more outplacements. You know, we had, an outplacement is not something you can plan for. You can look back at historical data and try to predict, but you just don't know if, if that's going to be needed or required, and not having the money for that. Supplies, textbooks and materials, many of the principals took a hard look at that. We also took a ten percent cut. It's, it's, it's now a ten percent from the whole. We'll look at redistributing that back, speaking with the administrators about what they actually can sustain at their buildings, but we did increase it ten percent. The equipment budget decreased, and the other, the other, all other expenditures on the bottom, to come with a five point nine six budget increase. The one thing I'd like to say about some of the background data here that's in the sheet, some of the coding based on the buildings may not be exactly accurate as far as, because if teachers were shared between buildings, that may not be exactly how it was depicted in there. So I don't want you to think that one school, if you look at the staffing, the totals are correct overall, but one school might be noted as having a full and it's really a shared position, or it may be something that was tied into grants. And I could take you through the pages here, I have a document here, just to draw your attention to the ones that are highlighted, give you some explanations. So you're looking at certified reading support, it's something that's a decrease. And that's really based on hiring and, and the, and the amount of salary that's required. Looking at library media specialists, a decrease there. It's transferring, and the current position, we have a library media era, running a library at this time, who is currently seeking a degree in, as a media specialist, so that's how you can see the decrease. Getting our certification is, is based on some changes in who's hired and their salary, their salary range. So we're accounting for the So we're accounting for the differentials in pay. Same thing here. You also look here, yes, that's my head. Health and Wellness at McGee, again, we had a retirement last year, differential in pay. The stipends, I think depending on what club's run, as well as the team leader stipends. Certified art, we had a reduction last year of our teacher. So you can see the reduction there. Family consumer science, we had reductions as far as the staffing, the salary range that one teacher was at versus new. So when you look at these, most of these reductions, it's not so much that it's a reduction after, it's usually a reduction in the pay, the pay, the pay rate based on scale, number of years of experience. If I keep going through, BCBA went to less days, but there was a reduction there. And we also put a teacher that just received a BCBA on full-time, who was not at the same salary rate, so that was a change. Again, most of these reductions are due to, look at the increase here, non-certified salaries. One of the items that still remains in the budget is to look at having that internship coordinator, and that was looking to have an extension there of Jack Rudy's position, who is currently not full-time at the high school, but he is there for a majority of the time. Adult ed director, we currently have a person without O-92 acting as the adult ed director, which allows us to do, reduce, reduce pay rate. The reduction there in custodial overtime, really taking a hard look at overtime, was a time when the high school would be open for the entire day on a Saturday, and coaches, coaches or co-curricular activity could take place. Now we look at opening for a block of time, all, all activities must take place during that time. This is a reduction in some of the custodial fees that were being charged. That $34,000 there, we know we have negotiations coming up, so we have a reserve there. And it's district-wide, we have a 14-hour a week, and it was just, when we cut secretary of health across the district, and we have a 14-hour a week secretary that will help at the Board of Education to take up some of the work that the full-time person did. You'll see the substitute line has decreased greatly at 167 there. That's really offset with the building subs that we took a look at, so we're hoping that with building subs, we don't need to have the substitute account be as high. $50,000 for substitute teachers, we consume that into the regular substitute line. That was a long-term sub that we had before, so we eliminated that. Employee benefits, decrease in the annuities for administrators, and it's really based on the number of years that the contract stays for administrators and community that receive long-term benefits. What it was set for last year, we found there was a reduction there from moving forward. The same thing with pension. Had some small reductions here with software. You can see, without me going through, I mean, there's some reductions across the board in contracted services. And you get an idea what those contracted services are. You can see it's an overall increase. You can see, as I said, it's not due to the general transportation, it's due to the specialized transportation of special education students, as well as some of the transportation that were required to by law. And the tuitions. Obviously, students have the ability to go to vocational school, there's transportation provided to that. The selection of a magnet school, there's transportation provided for the magnet schools. And then there's the public and private schools, transportation for special education. Supplies and textbook materials. The one line there that, the dollar difference, draw your, look down to line, one, two, three, four, five, six. Structural supplies, the Chromebooks, we have, the replacement cycle was to replace Chromebooks at the sixth grade level. When students entered middle school, they would last three years through middle school, and then we would replace freshman year, and those would hopefully last four years of usage. So looking at a Chromebook being $250 or so, you know, the average $2.65 a year over four years. So those funds being there for replacement cycle of those. Lastly, the other expenditures, which, tournament fees, which were reduced, dues and fees. When you look at this pie graph, I think it's important to look at, when you look at the red, the green, right, and the blue, so the administrator's salaries, the red, that equates to about half of the pie. The non-certified, and then the benefits, more than three quarters of the pie deals directly with people. So when you think about making the cuts and reducing the budget, you're really thinking about reducing people. Reducing people impacts programs, class size, and really what we're offering to our students. The other section of the pie graph, there's things that can be looked at, but if you look at cutting supplies, textbooks and materials, it's that lighter green portion. That's a very small section of the pie. My concern moving forward is that, as in the transmittal letter that's in your packet, the six-year average, I did not make it for the PowerPoint here, but if you look at your transmittal letter, which is in the front of the packet, I included a graph, a chart actually, and the five-year average is 1.38%. So if we took all of that light green portion of 1.143390, all of the supplies, we still would not reduce the budget back to what we typically have. Even if we took, you know, that quarter of the budget, you know, looking at that size, it'd be difficult to balance the budget at these numbers without cutting staff or programs, in my opinion. And I think that the pie graph helps to represent that.
Thank you, Adam. Wanting to throw questions?
Sure. Sure, glad to.
Questions or options on the budget as Brian has proposed it?
I don't know if I have a question, I still leave that into it, but, you know, first of all, thank you. Appreciate all the work from the administrators all the way through Jeff Cugno, superintendent, assistant superintendent, everyone putting a lot of time and effort into this, because it's not easy when you're looking at these averages of anywhere from 1.4% down to 1.3% over, or 1.09% over the course of the past five years. It's not a lot of movement. And on the Board of Ed side, it's always based on personnel. Without the people, the teachers in the classroom, it's not worth, education isn't worth much of anything. So, you know, it's certainly not going to be an easy task, but I look forward to working with the committee, working with the administration, Board of Finance, Council, and everyone else trying to see if we can accomplish what's best for the district, what's best for the town, and hopefully something that's more than the average 1.38% that we've had in the years past.
Thank you, Adam. I agree. There's a lot of work ahead of us, but if you don't have folks in the classrooms in all those schools doing the work, then education isn't really education.
I need to absorb this.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
I'm looking for the line item for trigonometry, though.
No, discrete math. You need to know discrete math.
If I knew discrete math, you're really working on this budget.
Yeah, if I could make one last comment, just to leave you with, 2.3% of the increase is solely based on contractual obligations with benefits and salaries. So 2.3 of that, solely based on that. ESS is almost three quarters of percent. So when you start thinking about the drivers, as I said, so much is tied back to people, and there's really not any new positions or requests from the administration that could be brought forward to you, other than a counselor at the high school and some positions. The other positions are positions that we had previously before last year that were cut.
Certainly have a lot to digest and process. Beyond that, I think we've reached the item that everyone anticipates. So we have a matter of adjournment. A motion to adjourn. That's Jada. Moves by Jamie. Second by Trudy. All in favor?
Aye.